Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. We welcome each of you here tonight. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you will stand, we'll have our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Just pray, please. Let me follow. We give you thanks for the day and for all the many blessings that you have bestowed on each and every one of us. We ask that you would join with us here in these council chambers tonight as we, this council, deliberate the issues of our city and our people. We ask that all the decisions, Lord, that we make here tonight will be in the best interest of all those that we serve, and we make our prayer in your son's name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the high United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on my agenda tonight is some special presentations, which I'm going to have the distinct honor of handling tonight. So let me move to the podium, and we'll get some folks recognized. If I could, please, if Dwight Johnson, what do you hear? Okay, don't see Dwight, we'll get him next time. William Clark, Bill, I saw you. Could you join me up here, please? Tonight, it's a pleasure, Bill, on behalf of City Council and indeed on behalf of the community, to present you with a certificate of appreciation for your service on the Board of Zoning Appeals. You've been an alternate member since 2004 through July of 2009. And while there may be those who think there's not a lot involved in the job that you do, I would beg to differ with them in that you've always had something to contribute, and you've always been there for this city and the issues that we face. So I want to present you with that bill, and it is awarded to William H. Clark, Board of Zoning Appeals, alternate member, November 2004 to July of 2009. And, Bill, it is an honor for me to present that to you. And again, we appreciate your time, the hours of service, and all that you've done for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Ms. Carrie Knowlton. How are you? Carrie is one of those folks who is special in many ways. Carrie's been active in this community for many years, long before she was a member of the school board. And she served as a member of the school board from July 1st of 2003 to June 30th of 2009, and from July 1st of '08 until the time that Carrie's term ended, she was chairman of the board. I think it's fair to say that we, as a city, spend an awful lot of time dealing with the education of our children. And we appoint and we try to appoint those folks that we think that will do those jobs that will benefit the children of this community and to make sure that they receive a quality education. And Carrie, that is certainly true with you. You stepped up to the plate on many occasions. You've dealt with many difficult issues, yet you've been strong, you've been true, and the children of our community are better off because of you and because of your service. And so on behalf of City Council, I'd like to present you with a certificate of appreciation that is awarded to Carrie Y. Knowlton, the PCOSON School Board, July 1st, 2003 to June 30th, 2009. And I'd like to mention again that Carrie was chairman from July 1st of '08 to June 30th of 2009. Carrie, we're going to miss you, and we're going to miss the input and all of the effort that you've put into being an excellent, excellent school board member. And on behalf of council and our community, I'm pleased to present you with this certificate. And you're welcome to have the microphone.
Oh, my gosh, thank you, Mayor Hesel. Thank you.
It just grew.
Thank you very much. And as Gordon Hesel had said, it truly was a pleasure for me to serve on the school board for six years, and I truly appreciate the appointment. And you do a wonderful job with working with the school board and working for the children of PCOSON. And thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
I try to watch every school board meeting. I don't get to attend a lot of them, but I certainly try to at least watch the rerun. And not only is Deborah very sharp, very smart, very intelligent, but she's very funny as well. And I know she brings a lot of humor to the school board. But on the serious side, Deborah, it is really an honor and a privilege to present you with this certificate of appreciation. Your input and your dedication to the educational system in this community are just second to none. I'm going to miss you. I'm going to miss you an awful lot. I'm going to miss your input, and I'm going to miss your grace, and I'm going to miss all of the input that you brought to the school board, and all of it in a positive way. Get involved in something else in this city. We need folks like you. Deborah, it is a pleasure for me to present this certificate of appreciation to you on behalf of council and the citizens of community. It is awarded to Deborah A. Banton, PCOSON School Board, July 1st, 2003 to June 30th of 2009. Congratulations. Thank you, Deborah. Dr. Raymond Vannal. Raymond Vannal is not a face that folks do not recognize in our city. Ray's been active in our community in many ways, shapes, and forms over many, many years. I remember when Ray came here as our superintendent of schools, and many on this council were privileged to serve with Ray, and I know I was. It was always a privilege, always a good experience to sit down with you and discuss issues with you that had to do with the children that we think so much of in this community. And Ray, you were always, always available to me, to members of council, but in particular, you were available to the moms and dads that had some interest in their children and wanted to chat with you about that. So what a tremendous job you did as a superintendent. You know, I might also say that during Hurricane Isabel, Ray was prominent once again in this community in the efforts while being damaged himself very severely. I recognized and saw that Ray was part of helping others in our community, which I think in itself is commendable. But this certificate is not about any of that. This is about another venture that this city council thought that we wanted somebody special on, and we chose Raymond Vannal to serve on the Thomas Nelson Board from July 1st of 2001 to June 30th of 2009. Eight years, Ray, and we appreciate it more than you know. I know the board there at Thomas Nelson will miss you. We will miss having you there, and we just appreciate all of the efforts, all of the time, all of the hours that you've put in to this community and the folks that live here. So on behalf of the city council and the citizens of PCOSON, I'd like to present that to you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Hesel and members of council, and also extend that thanks to the previous members of council who entrusted me with this opportunity to serve one more educational interest of PCOSON as a member of the Thomas Nelson Board. Community college is a tremendous asset, not only to our region in terms of economic development, many of the things that have happened here, like the expansion at Cannon and so forth, have come about because we had a solid workforce and a way to train workforces. And the community college has been at the heart of that. And a new thing that has, not new, but it has certainly added emphasis with our current economic conditions, I'm sure everyone with a television set has seen the Tidewater Community College ad that says "From here, go anywhere," and the presidents of the various institutions around the state saying how community college students do very fine when they go to the four year. That's true of every community college. Tidewater happens to be paying the bill for the ad, but it's true for every community college in the state, and we've seen a big increase of youngsters coming right out of high school and getting their first two years at Thomas Nelson, a fine education at a very reduced cost. So it's just been a real privilege for me to be part of such a fine institution. I thank you again.
Thank you. Now, if we could ask Mr. Edward Freeman. Eddie, would you join me here, and please bring your better half with you. Percy and Chief, great. He doesn't want to say anything, so we're going to put him on the spot. Eddie, let me say just a couple of things about you that I know for a fact. Number one, this is without doubt, I think, the only resolution that I've ever had the pleasure of reading that had 40 years inserted, 40 years of service. That's a long time to be dedicated to the city of PCOSON, and you've done it, and you've done it well. You've been an asset to this police department. Eddie has been an auxiliary officer for right at 40 years or maybe just a tad over 40 years. I remember when he went on the auxiliary department, and there is not a ballgame, there is not a special event that the folks in this community have not seen Eddie doing just a terrific job. Not only was he with the auxiliary department, but he also was available to ride with our folks and our full-time guys and was a tremendous help to them as well. You've not only been a great auxiliary police officer, you've also been a great citizen of this community, and it is my pleasure to know you and to call you a friend. Let me read the resolution if I could. It's a resolution in recognition and honor of Edward L. Freeman, auxiliary police officer. Whereas Edward L. Freeman is resigning his voluntary position as an auxiliary police officer with the PCOSON Police Department, having served for more than 40 years. And whereas Edward L. Freeman represented the PCOSON Auxiliary Police Force in a professional manner and volunteered thousands of hours to make PCOSON a better place to live and work. And whereas his dedication and devotion to duty have been exemplary, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of PCOSON, Virginia. Section 1, the City Council does hereby express its appreciation to Edward L. Freeman for his years of service to the City of PCOSON Auxiliary Police and for the many hours volunteered to serve the citizens of this community. Section 2, that in recognition of his 40 years of dedicated and excellent service to the community and upon the recommendation of the police chief, he shall be allowed to purchase the service handgun issued to him at a price equivalent to the weapons fair market value on the date of his retirement as prescribed by Resolution Number 2694 adopted on March 24, 1997. Section 3, that this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption and a framed copy presented to Edward L. Freeman in recognition of his exemplary and devoted service to the PCOSON Auxiliary Police Force. And Eddie, I would just add to this community as well. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Well, Eddie Lee, I haven't known you 40 years, but I have known you about 18 years. And what I've known of you has been something that's impressed me. I met you when you were umpiring softball. And although I thought you did a great job with most of your judgments, there are a few calls I'd like to go back and discuss with you when I was playing, but you're chief on the field when you're umpiring. And so it was kind of fun to be the chief when you were supervising your work as an auxiliary officer. But, you know, I gave a lot of thought to your 40 years of service, and I'm going to tell you, one word continues to come to mind, and that's just gratitude. Gratitude for your willingness to step up to the plate and serve this community, not in just one of its critical functions, that of public safety and law enforcement, but one that places your life in danger. And the more I think about that, and I think about the conversations we have during budget time about, you know, salaries for police officers and for firefighters, and I think, and here stands a man that did it for 40 years for free. It overwhelms me with just your dedication and your love for this community. And all I can say is just congratulations and thank you for what you've done for the city that I live in and I call home and tell you how much I appreciate everything you've done for our police department in this city. We also have a special presentation we'd like to present to you from the police department and on behalf of a grateful city. And this says, "To Eddie Lee Freeman, in recognition of your 40 years of dedicated law enforcement service," and it has his actual badge on it that he wore during the time he served. Eddie Lee, thank you again, and congratulations.
All righty, let's move on on our agenda to our audience for visitors. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address council at this time on any issue, we'd be delighted to hear from you at this time. Don't see any, so we'll move on to the approval of minutes. We have two sessions. If we could take those individually, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of the City Council meeting July 27, 2009, regular session as amended.
All right, sir. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we have a motion made in second that we adopt the regular session minutes from July 27, 2009. Any concerns or comments? Any questions? If not, Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Creaker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Stand.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hesel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero with one abstention.
Thank you, ma'am. And the work session, July 27 through 9 as well.
Mr. Mayor, I make a recognition, we approve the minutes of the work session of July 27, 2009.
Okay. All right, we have a motion made in second that we adopt the work session minutes as well. Any concerns, comments regarding those? If not, Judy, please.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Creaker.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Stand.
And Mayor Hesel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero with one abstention.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Let's move on to Item F, which is a public hearing, the only public hearing that we have tonight. It is a request by Z-Mark LLC for amendment of an existing conditional use permit for expansion of hours of operation. Randy?
Debbie Vass will present a short summary for staff, be available for any questions to add prior to public hearing.
All right, sir. Thank you. Hey, Debbie.
Hello, how are you?
Great.
Good. It's good to see you all and good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. And if we could have the lights, Bob, when you get a chance, please. Thank you. On behalf of the city's planning commission, staff is presenting to you this evening an application by Mr. David Allen, who is representing the property owner, Z-Mark LLC, for a proposed change in the operating hours of the Zoom's convenience store and fuel sales facility located at the corner of With Creek and Little Florida Road. Mr. Allen is proposing to expand the existing hours of operation from 19 hours a day, seven days a week, to 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Currently, the facility operates with a restricted hour of 5:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., again, seven days a week. This restriction, as well as many other restrictions, have been enforced since 2007, when Mr. Allen approached the city and requested to renovate two existing parcels that are located at the corner of With Creek and Little Florida Road. The corner lot contained the convenience store and one fuel pump island, and the second parcel, which fronted on Little Florida Road, contained a four-bay self-serve car wash facility with a maintenance building. Mr. Allen, at that time in 2007, proposed to upgrade the two facilities by removing the old car wash building and replacing it with a new self-serve automated car wash building. In addition, he also proposed to install a second fuel pump island on the Zoom site. That request was approved with several conditions concerning site layout, hours of operation, the use landscaping and fencing to help screen the site from adjacent properties. We also require the submission of a lighting plan to help avoid light trespass onto adjacent parcels and prohibited noise and the exterior storage of products, as well as the onsite creation of any recreational areas. Then in 2008, and before the improvements were actually installed from the '07 approval, Mr. Allen decided to remove the car wash facility completely from the site and replace it with a third island, fuel pump island. That approval was also approved by both the planning commission and City Council. At that time, all the conditions that were imposed on the '07 approval was also carried over to the '08 approval. Again, the purpose of that was to try to ensure that we were trying to protect the adjacent properties, especially the residences on two sides of the Zoom site. On the slide on the screen before you, this is an actual copy of the city zoning map. In purple or in pink is the B-2 district area, while to the east of that, which is on the right-hand side, in the gold is the R-1 residential, single-family. It's important to note that the Zoom's facility is located in the center of the B-2 district corridor, which extends basically from the villas up to Norfolk Forest, and contains a variety of commercial uses, primarily professional office and retail. There are a couple of fast food restaurants that operate in close vicinity to the Zoom's facility. They do operate with a conditional use permit. Most of the uses in the B-2 district operate without a conditional use permit, as they are uses that are permitted by right. It is important to note that if you look at the properties of the B-2 district that fronts on With Creek Road on the east side, all of those properties basically back up to the single-family residential. So you have a whole list of uses that are currently operating at that location without having a conditional use permit to control perimeter landscaping and fencing to help screen the use from the adjacent parcels. In the planning commission's review of this, one of the things that the staff had suggested that they may consider is the fact in the future that we do a more comprehensive review of the B-2 district regulations to see if there is compatibility between those uses and the single-family homes to the east. Nevertheless, the planning commission found that most of the uses in the B-2 district and to the east and the single-family are currently compliant with the city's adopted land use goals as contained in the city's comprehensive plan. So therefore, in their review of the application, where they held a public hearing last Monday evening, and after receiving comments of concern from both neighboring and non-neighboring residents, basically, they found that the application complied with their goal to help sustain the business community and that the business itself did offer a service that no one else offered in the city of PCOSON, in that providing fuel sales 24 hours a day, and that the extension of hours was only five additional hours per day. They also felt that the concerns that were raised by the neighboring landowners concerning noise and light trespass could be handled through the existing conditions that were imposed on the use permit in the '07 approval. With that said, we have advertised this application for consideration this evening, both in the Daily Press and the PCOSON Post and on the city's webpage. As well, we did notify the adjacent property owners in writing of the hearing this evening. And with that said, I'll present the application to you for consideration and be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there questions to Debbie?
Debbie, are there any other businesses in town, other than the 7-Eleven, that are open from midnight to 5:00?
Not to my knowledge, no.
But the 7-Eleven is?
Yes.
And that's a convenience store like this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And is it zoned, the same thing, is it zoned B-2, the 7-Eleven? Yes, ma'am. But it doesn't have a conditional use permit? No, ma'am. It operates as illegal non-conforming use. Okay.
I think I have one question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
For the police chief, I guess, is back in the old days when there was a car wash there, it was a hangout pretty much for a lot of the youth of the city. And do you believe that, you know, we won't have a problem again with people hanging out for those five hours that it's open? I don't want to put you on the spot, but you know best.
That's a great question, Mr. Creaker, and I think it's something that we may have to watch if you allow the permit. My feeling is because of the traffic that comes in and how there's movement there, when some of the problems that occurred at the old car wash, what they would physically do would be to block it off, and people wouldn't pull in there. So it was allowed to be used for that purpose, much like sometimes the front of the parking lot at the Farm Fresh has been used. However, where we have pumps, gas pumps, and there's a flow of traffic, I don't anticipate that would happen there.
Okay. Thanks, Lynn. Thank you, Chief. Okay, any other questions of Debbie? Any other questions of the police chief? All right, Debbie, thank you very much. Well done. Let's open the public hearing then and see if there's anyone in our audience that would like to address this request. Anyone? All righty, let's close the public hearing. It's a discussion of council. Anyone prepare with a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the existing conditional use permit to expand the operating hours at the existing fuel station, convenience store at 436 With Creek Road.
Okay. All right, we have a motion made in second that we approve the conditional use permit. Any other comments, questions? If not, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Creaker.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Mayor Hesel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Let's move on to unfinished business. First item is an ordinance requiring fingerprinting for concealed weapons permit. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, just would note to you, this is second reading. You first considered this at your last meeting. Chief Bowen, you can answer questions. He's here to answer any additional questions you have, but the intent of this ordinance is to make the rules for obtaining a concealed weapon permit consistent with York County.
Okay. Cliff, any other comments?
The city manager summed it up well. Again, this, we just, since we share court services with York County, the application process through the clerk of courts office, PCOSON residents would be treated the same as York County residents, and it gives us a good background check. So I endorse the ordinance and request that you would pass it.
All right, thanks, sir. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move that we pass an ordinance amending the code of ordinance of the city of PCOSON by amending Section 54 TAC 209 pertaining to the carrying concealed firearms.
Thanks, sir.
Concealed weapons.
Second. All right, motion made in second, we adopt the ordinance. Any concerns, comments? Any questions? If not, Judy, please.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Creaker.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
And Mayor Hesel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 2, under unfinished business, authorization to proceed with Heritage Park Initiative. Asked council at the last meeting to move that to this meeting, and you were kind enough to do that. What the authorization is asking council to do now is to allow us to move forward in acquiring the dollars outside of budget dollars so that we can bring this park to fruition. That, what we've determined over the past couple of weeks, I've had a conversation with some of the larger business owners in the community, they seem to be very much interested in helping us with that. Jack Moran has been asked to kind of step in and assist with this program. Jack has agreed to do that. For those of you who do not know what the Heritage Park would be, provided that we can make it work, it would be a memorial to not only our watermen and our farmers and our military, but would also give folks an opportunity to invest or place bricks or those kinds of things with names engraved on them, with folks that they, family members or lost loved ones or whatever it is that they wanted to put on those bricks. So we are soliciting for those funds, and I think the first thing we want to do, I think the property is pretty much done. I think Wayne is working on that with Wells Fargo.
Survey to come back and also have a survey to work on.
So anyway, that's where we are. That's what we want to do. I think it will be a focal point of this community. I think it's just a tremendous project, and quite frankly, I believe that this will work out similar to, probably better than our new football stadium or our turf due, because people are interested in supporting it and it's an opportunity for everybody in the community to get involved. I just think it will be a great project. So what we're asking council for tonight is... So what we're asking council for tonight is allow us to move forward, but we're not asking for any money.
It's a worthwhile project, Mr. Mayor, and happy to make a motion that we adopt an ordinance appropriating, making additional appropriations for fiscal year 2010 and approving the Pecosin Heritage Park Initiative.
Second. Okay. We have a motion made in second that we proceed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add my two cents for this. I think this is a great project, and I'm sure a lot of the civic organizations are going to get behind it. And I'd also like to, just so the citizens will know, that in the resolution we're passing, it says the award and purchase of any contracts and supplies will be executed after the donations for the project are received. So we're going to get the donations, and then we're going to go ahead and do this. And I think that's good, and I really look forward to helping. I'm sure others do. Jack Moran is a great person to dedicate his time and effort to lead this fund drive.
Indeed. Thank you, sir. Okay, any other questions? All right, then we have a motion made in second that we adopt this ordinance.
Councilman Marie?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Hunt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, Judy. Let's move on to new business. The first item is an ordinance amending the city code to increase building code fees. Randy?
Yes, sir. This was a, if I could, if I could digress just for a second. You did recognize Mr. Moran for his leadership and his upcoming leadership in the fundraising, but I think it'd be appropriate to also recognize Mr. Callis for all his work. Much of the documents in his package, including the renderings, happened under his able management.
Absolutely. Good to hear.
Thank you, Mayor.
Under new business, the first item is a continuation of an item that was discussed previously by the council at your last meeting. At that meeting, you discussed whether or not to move forward with amendments to both the building fees and the fees associated with planning and zoning. The planning and zoning fees go a different route. They have to go through the Planning Commission first. The building fees are here. What we tried to do is, and you'll see it on the first page, is give you the four alternatives. You'll always see alternative one is to do nothing, but beyond that, meaning make no change in this case, what we tried to do was capture what we heard the council talking about with respect to recommendations, the first alternative of which, and there are each alternative has a implementing ordinance. Beginning January 1, 2010, the current fees, meaning make no change to the fees at this time, however, begin to make an annual adjustment effective this coming January. The second alternative incorporates both the proposed new fees, when we use the word propose, that's what we mean by is new, and also to implement the concept discussed by council with regard to annual updates based on the CPI. And then the last alternative is simply to adopt the proposed fees without the escalator clause in it. That was the original idea brought forward for the council consideration staff, and my suggestion to you, recommendation is alternative three, but we await your direction.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any comments by council?
I think I like either alternative three or four. To me, it really comes down to a question of which of the citizens are going to pay these fees, because the staff time is going to have to be spent. The money is going to be dispensed by staff, and it's whether it gets reimbursed through fees or not. I originally had thought that I liked alternative three better, where we would increase the fees by the amount recommended by staff and then benchmark it, and then increase yearly by the CPI. The only thing is, if you look back over the last 12 months, the CPI is negative, and then some years it's going to be positive, but it's going to be a couple percent, so we're going to end up with really funny numbers like, you know, $50.37 type of thing. So I probably like alternative four better than three, but I can live with either.
Okay.
Maybe we could amend three to be rounded to, you know, the next $0.50 or dollar. Doesn't make more sense. That'd be fine.
I think that's a good idea, Carrie.
Agree with that.
Carrie, you want to?
To generally reflect, is that how you could word it, alternative three, instead of to reflect the Consumer Price Index?
To reflect the increase and round it to the nearest dollar.
You want to go to a dollar or a half dollar?
Half dollar.
Dollar?
Dollar.
I'd go to a dollar, just simply because of the bookkeeping expense with doing decimals and carrying it over for the staff, and maybe you should do around a dollar.
Okay. So if the council likes alternative three with that amendment? So moved. Okay. Is there a second? Okay.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay. Any further questions? Any further comments? All right. Judy, please.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Marie?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Hunt?
Aye.
Mayor Helsel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Let's move on to item two, an ordinance amending section 66-63 of the city code, subject garbage fee exemptions for elderly and disabled persons. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, this is essentially a housekeeping item to conform our ordinance to what we believe to be the intent for previous change. What we're doing here is substituting head of household and all persons living in the household for owner, recognizing that we do, in some instances, have rental property, and we want to avoid confusion, to make sure the right people are eligible for this and are not excluded, because the owner may have a higher income.
Okay. All right.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Pecosin, revising chapter 66, article 3, section 66, 63 pertaining to reduce solid waste management collection costs.
All right. Second. All right, we have a motion made in second that we adopt the ordinance. Are there other comments? Questions? If not, Judy, please.
Councilman Marie?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Hunt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, Judy, thank you. Item three, under new business, is an ordinance making transfers and additional appropriations for fiscal year 2009. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, when we brought you the last item, which we told you at the time, we thought with one possible exception, in social services, was the concluding transfers for 2009, we told you we'd be back, and there are just a few other minor items. This is the last item to close out fiscal year 2009, and it's only here if you have questions for her, but otherwise recommend is ready, ready for your consideration.
Okay. Any questions of Teresa or Randy?
I have one question for Teresa. She could, please. Teresa, how did we end up doing last year as far as revenues and expenditures versus what was budgeted?
We actually ended up not too bad. Our revenues were down about $200,000, but we really cut our expenses during the current year, and we were able to almost maintain our fund balance from the beginning of the year. So our fund balance at the end of the year stands at about 14%.
Outstanding.
14, you said? Yes, sir.
14.
That's more than three percentage points higher than we thought last time we talked to you on this subject.
That's just absolutely outstanding.
Good.
Staff did a remarkable job, and.
No questions about it. No questions about it. Is that all, Tom?
Yes, thanks.
Thanks, Teresa.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt the ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2008 and 2009.
Second. All right, we have a motion made in second that we adopt the ordinance. Any other concerns, comments? Mary, done. Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Hunt?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Marie?
Aye.
Mayor Helsel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, thank you, Judy. We'll move on to item four, an ordinance making additional appropriations for FY 2010. Randy?
Yes, sir. This, these two are relatively minor housekeeping items. They are chronicized for you on the front page. They specifically deal with better-than-anticipated state library money. I don't think we'll be able to say better anticipated in state money again this year, so this may be the only time we should celebrate it. Also, there is some additional money for a purchase of a trailer for our CERT team, a small grant, which we were successful in getting through the state for equipment for fire and rescue, and then you will see also the formalization of the consensus of the council at your last meeting pertaining to the museum. I would point out to you, in this and in future agendas, each time there is a proposed use of your contingency reserve, you'll see a paragraph at the bottom telling you how much you began the day with, and if each item on the agenda was approved, how much you would end the day with.
Good to hear.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
May like to make a motion we approve an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for FY 2009.
All right, sir. Thank you. Was there a second? I'm sorry.
Carrie.
2010, right? Yeah, sorry. Okay. All right, any concerns, any comments? Judy, please.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Marie?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Hunt?
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's move on to item five, is a resolution authorizing the contract of copier leases. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, one of the things that helped contribute to the overall positive finances at the end of last year was a sort of an innovative spirit within the city. We're constantly looking to find ways to do our job better and cheaper, and our finance director, Teresa, along with many others, worked on this to try to renegotiate, and we're successful, in bringing to the table a new, cheaper way to do our copier contract, which will both provide increased functionality and save us some money.
All right.
I just hear a recommendation for approval.
Like that. All right, is there a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that we adopt the resolution authorizing the contract for copier leases.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor. All right, motion made second that we adopt the resolution. Any other comments or concerns? Okay, Judy, please.
Councilman Hunt?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Marie?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll move on to item six, is a resolution accepting the 2007 Citizen Court Grant. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, this is a resolution accepting $20,000 for the CERT grant for this year. There is no local match required.
All right, sir. Simple item. That's it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a resolution accepting a grant from the Department of Homeland Security for the Citizen Emergency Response Team for national preparedness efforts in the city of Pecosin.
Thank you, Tom. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, ma'am. We have a motion made in second that we adopt the resolution. Any other concerns, comments? If not, Judy, please.
Councilman Marie?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Hunt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, thanks, Judy. Let's move on to item seven, which is a resolution making appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Wetlands Board, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Randy, any comments?
No, sir.
Does anyone prepare with a motion with some names? Carrie?
I would like to request that we postpone the Parks and Recs part of this until the next meeting, and I don't know if Wayne postponed or delayed. What's the right word?
Postponed, postponed.
Postponed, okay.
Okay, how about the Board of Zoning Appeals, Wetlands Board?
Do you want me to do a resolution for that?
Sure.
Okay.
We need a second for his motion to postpone.
Carrie, yes. Okay. There's a second, Mr. Freeman. And we need to.
Shall we go ahead and vote on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Hunt?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Marie?
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel?
Aye.
Motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. We're at Board of Zoning Appeals and Wetlands Board.
Okay, just to be clear on the Parks and Rec, that was to postpone all three, the at-large and the two western? We can.
Do you have an at-large?
I had an at-large, because the person was gracious enough to continue serving. So we can just take that up.
The two western was my concern.
We can take that up in two weeks, but there's.
Let's do that. Let's do that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution making appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals and Wetlands Board?
Okay.
With the names filled in of Les Nagel for the Board of Zoning Appeals, term to expire August 31, 2014, and also Michael Hannah for the Wetland Board, term to expire August 31, 2014.
Is that a reappointment?
Both those are reappointments, because both of those people are gracious enough to.
Right, I just want to make sure, because I want to listen. Okay, we have a motion then. Do we adopt the resolution? Okay. Motion made second that we adopt the resolution with those names inserted. Okay? All right, Judy, please.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Marie?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Last item on our agenda is a resolution endorsing the efforts of Green Jobs Alliance and Ordinance appropriating the city's per capita share of funding.
You need to amend the agenda first, probably.
To put that on there? Okay, so we need to amend the agenda to include item eight. Did we do that? Mr. Mayor, so moved. Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, we amend the, our agenda to include item eight. Judy?
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Heskey.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, thanks, thanks, Judy. So, item eight on our agenda is a resolution endorsing the efforts of Green Jobs Alliance and Ordinance appropriating the city's per capita share of funding. This is an item that kind of didn't come on as quickly. We thought really not to put this on the agenda tonight, but it is actually at a request of the mayor and the vice mayor of the city of Hampton. I think all other jurisdictions have this same resolution. They either are on their agendas or they are planned for their agendas. I know that Carrie and Frank, I believe, wanted, wanted the city to be able to compete for green awards and those types of things. This is part of it and certainly plays into workforce development that I know that this council is very much interested in. So, yeah, I would ask that you would support the resolution and we could call Mayor Ward in the morning and tell him if Pecosin's on board.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt the ordinance making additional appropriation for Green Jobs Alliance and their efforts for fiscal year 2009, 2010, just for the information to citizens, total amount is $1,180.
Thank you, Judy.
The mayor pointed out that there are actually two. He said this is the ordinance and then we'll do the resolution.
Yes. And Judy's doing the ordinance now.
Correct.
Was there a second for the ordinance?
I skipped the resolution.
I don't know. Okay, Carrie did. Judy, please.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Heskey.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, and we have the resolution as well.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution endorsing the efforts of the Green Jobs Alliance and its applications for federal grants to provide green workforce training to Hampton Roads region and the Commonwealth of Virginia.
Thank you. Okay, we have motion made and seconded, we adopt the resolution as well. Any other comments, questions? If not, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman. Councilman Marie.
Aye.
And Mayor Heskey.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Comments of the city manager, Mr. Wheeler?
Thank you, sir. Just a few items to bring to your attention. One, I appreciate the understanding of the members of council with regard to the need to postpone this evening's work session on the comprehensive plan. I'm very pleased to let you know that Joseph Carter of our staff and his wife and his baby are doing well.
Good.
But Joseph's not doing until tomorrow, so thank you for your understanding. You'll find attached to the manager's report a revised timeline. What we did is we took all of the things that had been previously approved by the council with regard to work sessions and key dates and just slipped them back two weeks and without objection, we'll continue to promulgate this using both our website or Twitter site or TV channel and post it so that there's no confusion and everybody knows when we meet. I would happy to report that despite Joseph's absence, we did have the first sidewalk committee meeting. It was a good and vigorous discussion. I'd note to the community, that's an inclusive group and it's not too late to join, but if you want to join, it's best to get in on its foundational meetings. And the next one is September the 10th in this evening, in the evening, in this room. I would note for the public, the beginning of September, we go back on the standard two-meeting-a-month schedule. Two other items, one principally for the community because we can never talk about the seafood festival enough. If you haven't marked your calendar already, October the 16th through the 18th is the seafood festival. The kickoff 5K running fishing tournament is on the 10th and the workboat races are on the 11th. And lastly, I would note to you that in your package is a copy of the draft hazard mitigation plan. We would like to bring this for your, forward for your consideration at your next meeting. And I believe maybe a request later in the meeting to hold a work session on the 14th and we'll be prepared to do that as well.
Okay. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right, thanks, sir. Tracy?
Thanks. I'll go ahead and request the work session on the 14th if that's something you think that would benefit us.
Can't possibly hurt.
Okay. And I just wanted to, I had a great vacation and I apologize for not being here last month, but since I've been back, I wanted to let you know that I did attend the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization meeting last week. And we have the newly established sidewalk committee, which I hope more people will come to on September the 10th, as Randy mentioned. But I wanted to let people know that the larger Hampton Roads area also is wanting people to participate in their planning for what we want for just general transportation in the area. And that includes water sidewalks, bike paths, as well as roads and, and bridges and tunnels and all that. So if anybody from Pecosin would be willing to get involved in that, it really would be great to have Pecosin represented on that committee. They just want citizen input, so that's it.
Thank you for attending that for me. I appreciate that, Tracy. Judy?
Just one question, Randy. Who's the staff facilitator in sidewalk?
Joseph Carter is the lead staff and Dave Callis is the backup.
Okay.
And in Joseph's absence, I convened the first meeting.
Okay. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Right.
Yeah, one thing, Mr. Mayor, is I think everybody in council knows the municipal workforce development had a program going on through the ARRA. And we bring in eight youths to Pecosin to work summer jobs. And we had working, IEPs personnel working within the city and also with the schools. And my hat goes off to Doris Feldman. She and I started off kind of being co-runners of the program, high from the city side because Judy was busy doing other things at the time. And I kind of fell by the wayside, maybe because my arm or whatever. And she took it over and did a fantastic job. And, you know, she ran a program masterfully. She had all of our eight students come in at one time with their parents to do the applications and they had all the paperwork provided that she was supposed to have. And the program was a big success. I think Judy went to the reception last Thursday, Judy, wasn't it? I couldn't...
Wednesday.
Wednesday. I missed that. But, I mean, she was so pleased by the results of the, you know, of the youth of our community. And those who really didn't have a chance beforehand, like for job interviews, that now they have the confidence to maybe go out and find a job. So, I mean, it's really good. And, you know, if there's ever any part-time jobs within the city or the school system, I mean, she has these eight, you know, youths that would very much enjoy working with us or whatever. So, to her, a big thanks. I mean, she did it all. I mean, it was kind of a extra additional duty, I guess, for her, but she did a great job.
Good deal.
Yeah. And I called the superintendent today and I told her, and, you know, hopefully, you know, Doris will get a half a day off or something. I don't know. That's it, sir.
All right, thank you. Carrie?
Well, just generally that, just want everybody to know, there's a lot of work being done by our very small staff. And it just amazes me continuously, you know, riding around here last week, especially with the pre-possible hurricane cleanup and stuff. And it's just tremendous amounts of work being done everywhere, all over the city by nearly everybody. And we are geared to the point where when we have one person out, we, we cancel a work session. So everybody has a very important job and does it really, really well. And to me, that's just kind of like the right-sized workforce where everybody is that productive and that engaged. And I just want, you know, just say thank you to everybody who works for the city. Because I'm amazed daily at what gets done with the numbers that we have.
Thanks, Carrie. Thank you. Tom?
Mr. Mayor, I've gotten a few calls about Heidi's Park from time to time. And if the city manager could address some of the investigations you've done on, on Heidi's Park. It's been closed by the people who own it. And I know that you've had some discussions with them. If you could let us know.
Be glad to. Mr. Callis and I met with the owner of the property several weeks ago. And our main purpose was to explore with them something that we had heard, not from them, but in the community, that there might be an interest in partnering with them to provide some sort of limited public use of the property in exchange for some assistance. The owners were clear that at this time, they're not interested in that. And so we thanked them first for that and we pledged to assist them in their enforcement of trespass and parking and other things, to go out of our way to be good neighbors to them and to that property. And I think we built a better dialogue with them because as the staff, I'm not sure we had much before that. So, so that's where we are with that.
Well, thank you for looking into that. And I've, I have enjoyed Heidi's Park in the, in the past. And if there's anything that the city can do, please go and see if we can, we can help. If there's anything at all, if they come with us, just let us know. And I would like to see Heidi's Park, you know, back open. But of course, it is private property and they can, can do what they want with it. That is a really nice asset that we've had for a long time and it's too bad they felt it necessary to close it after some vandalism. The, the second thing was I've noticed at the, at Pecosin Marina, we have the pump-out station and it doesn't seem to be getting a lot of use. And I'd had some conversations with some people. And the suggestion was that we, if, maybe if we made the pump-out station free and recoup the money some other way, we could get some more use out of it. Could you look into that for there and also for Messick Point? Do, or could we put a pump-out station at Messick?
Mayor? A couple of things about that. First, we, you're right, we get very limited use of our existing pump-out station. If you translate money in as tokens in, in each of the last several years, our total amount in is less than $100. It's, it is de minimis in terms of use. With regard to Messick Point, Bob Speechley is working with me to identify whether or not the piping that was originally or in the past installed out there is still structurally intact to accept the pumping equipment, which we have. And if the, if there are no tremendous issues with the piping that we can't solve, putting that piping in and having a pump-out station additionally there is something that we can do with, with very little outside money or maybe no outside money, we would probably need to put a couple of days' work into it. But it's really, it's that close to achieving. Simultaneously as we work on that, recently we received a letter from the folks that monitor the Chesapeake Bay license plate money, asking, soliciting ideas. And Judy and I are working on putting together a proposal that we could use the monies from there to offset wholly the public cost of not only installing the additional facility, which would not be that significant in and of itself, and continuing on. So we might be able to provide an expanded benefit at no additional cost at all to the city. But should the council wish to move forward in advance of that and give some, some thoughts or direction with regard to the continuation or discontinuation of the tokens, we're willing to accept that right now. The amount of money that we get really is de minimis.
What I'd like to see is make it free because it's a, when you read the little sign on it, it says you have to go to such and such a building. And of course, the building is a couple of blocks away.
My only comment would be that if it encourages folks to use the pump-out facility, I don't have a problem.
I think we should wait and hear what you do with this grant. And so we can do it all in one tail swoop.
I don't have issue with that. That's a good, good idea.
I hate to do knee-jerk stuff, but just right off the fly. Let's just take a look at it.
Be glad to.
Okay. One thing, if I could ask also for our next meeting, we're going to be talking about the comprehensive plan, I believe, and the work session. And if you could generate consensus document from the surveys we've had, similar to what was done in 1995, I think, I have a copy of it and I think you might have a copy of it, too. It was in the file. But generate a consensus document so we can compare the consensus of the surveys to what is in the comprehensive plan and have that be part of the preparation for our next work session.
That's something that you'd like, Mr. Mayor?
That's what I'm hearing.
The council would like?
Well, I think you, you know... It's all right with me.
I think a good idea.
Okay.
Can I make sure, Mr. Marie, that I understand the, your expectation is a consensus document based on the 2004 and 2006 survey?
Correct. And to be similar to what was done in 1995, which was just a general outline, not scientific, not a lot of percentages, but just a general statement of what the consensus was.
Understand.
Okay. And then one final thing, and that is Debbie in her presentation talked about, we have some businesses that had, I believe, if I understood correctly, have conditional use permits for businesses that are joined residential areas. And she made a recommendation, if it was our desire to go have those looked, to go have those conditional use permits looked at to be more compatible with being next to residences the next time it came up. If that's in fact what she wanted, that sounded like a good idea to me. But is, is that what she wanted, Debbie? Or did I get it wrong?
Actually, the businesses that lie adjacent to the residential district are those that do not operate with a conditional use permit. So in a more comprehensive review of the B2 district, we may want to just take a look at the possibility if, as to whether or not the uses that are allowed in the B2 district are compatible with the residential. And maybe we should consider some type of transitional zone between the high-volume traffic that's generated by B2 use and residential, with maybe more of the limited, limited commercial lying adjacent to the B2. The creation of a new district is what I was thinking.
When we talk about the comp plan next week and following meetings, okay.
That would be a perfect time.
Thank you. So then we'll just defer that.
Yeah, and we also do a tremendous service, I think, to the folks that own those residential homes. Chances of them being able to sell them, probably next to nothing. So I think it's a good idea as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Is that all? Okay, thanks, Debbie. Just a couple of things, just some requests that I've had this week. And I would ask council if you would, would be all right with this. One, I think Randy and I met with, with a gentleman concerned about the way we charge for our sewer charges and he was interested in doing on water consumption. If we could just send that out, make some comments or call Randy. I don't think it needs to be part of a work session or something on our agenda. If you would just take a look at it and comment.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Just one question on this.
Yes, sir.
Is that the, the same?
Yes.
Issue?
Yes.
Okay.
Same issue, same person. The other thing is that there is a conditional use permit that is, we granted some years ago to the, to the nursery, the Tigner's Nursery. Again, I would ask Randy if he would send, I don't know how many of you have been contacted by those folks. I know I have, I think Carrie has, Tom, I know you were.
Yes.
If, if you would take a look at the conditional use permit and maybe drop by and look at the property and see if the changes they're asking for might be in order. Again, I don't think it's something that we need to have on a work session. If you don't mind doing that, it would be a tremendous help, not only to the city, but to the Tigner's as well. Finally, and, and council got a copy of the letter that was sent to the, to the Shady Oaks Mobile Home Parks. And, and after our last meeting, I felt very strongly that, that those folks have been really, really imposed on. I really felt like that, that there had been some folks throughout the Mobile Home Park that had spread a rash of what I call rumors and hate and discontent, quite frankly. And I think it's unfortunate that those people were, were put at risk, if you will, and they were given, in my opinion, some, some really bad information. They assumed that at our last meeting, that this council would actually take their property, or take the property that they currently have their mobile homes on and overnight, we're going to have some tremendous condo project there. The letter went out to those folks assuring them that this council was not going to do that. We've never intended on doing that. And that I went as far as to say in the letter that those folks could rest assured that we would be asking for that particular project to be removed from the comprehensive plan. And since then, I've been contacted by a couple of folks there. If I've spoken incorrectly for council, which I don't think that I have, apologize for that. I don't like to speak for council often, but in this particular case, those people were troubled, they were worried. And it's just unfortunate that we have folks that will, you know, attempt to disrupt an entire community, and that's what they are, by using the comprehensive plan, if you will. Granted, there are some comments in there that, that probably this council will, will remove or change, but given the fact that it's a plan and only a pay, a plan, this council, to my knowledge, has no, no intentions of taking anybody's property or building condominium complexes. If I'm wrong, please tell me. You guys are meeting somewhere that I don't know about, but I don't think that's, I don't think that's going on. So if those folks in Shady Oaks are listening, please believe that, that the content of the letter is accurate. I think it reflects this council's opinion. And, you know, I will continue to say that as long as folks continue to try to stir up controversy in this community with letters and, and comments to, to those folks who just can't defend themselves. I think that's a sad day. But anyway, that's all I've got. Anything else? Most still adjourned?
Some owed.
Motion made and seconded, we adjourn. Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
And Mayor Heskey.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Before I say we're adjourned, let, Randy, I meant to say one more thing. This has to do with you. You've only been here a short while. And I know that, you know, I dragged him out of the movies on Saturday with his family to come and look at some drainage issues that he was just tickled to death to do. And I want to apologize publicly for doing that, but the fire department got you there and I appreciate that. I just want to say to you that this council made the right decision when we hired you as our city manager.
Thank you.
And I, I think you will prove that time and time and time again. So I want you to know that.
Thank you.
Okay, we're adjourned.